Well, if we're ready, I'll call the February 11th, 2025 Troutdale Work Session to order. And we'll start with the roll call.
Counselor White.
Here.
Counselor Davidson.
Here.
Counselor Leamy.
Here.
Counselor Allen.
Here.
Counselor One.
Here.
Mayor Rittman.
Here. All right. We are interviewing candidates. Welcome. The first candidate has bowed out. So that's why we're starting a few minutes late. But to discuss the process, I'm welcome to any suggestions, but Ray actually handed out interview questions we used in the past, a few years ago. And the questions look OK to me. And we just go around asking the same questions of all the candidates unless someone has a better idea.
That's great.
Is that good?
Yep.
All right.
We don't need to keep track of each person individually? You just take notes?
Take notes as you wish.
Yeah.
OK.
Budget carrying people.
Mayor, you also may want to talk about how you want to, once you get all of them done, how you want to process selecting one.
Yeah.
Because that's always a difficult thing, especially when you have six candidates.
We, after the interviews are completed, we will discuss who we're going to pick. That necessarily has to be done in a public meeting. Candidates do not have to wait around to listen to the interview process if you want to get going. But we, we promise to let you know the result. I assume tonight, somebody will.
You don't have to, but it's always usually happened that way.
Anyway, that's, that's what I would wish. And so we'll, after your interview is over, you can leave or stay and listen to the others if you wish. Our discussion will be a, we will not vote to select a candidate at the end of the work session, but we will see if we have a consensus on who we're going to select. And the person selected then will be officially selected at the, during the council meeting, which starts at seven. And we, should the person that we select be in the room or willing to come into the room, we will swear that candidate in tonight and have him join the meeting. Him or her, yeah, the candidate, whoever it is. So if that's agreeable with everybody, we'll start with Chris Barney.
I have one quick question, Dave.
Oh, hang on.
On the swearing, could we give them the option in case they wanted to invite?
Of course.
Cam out?
Yes.
Because it's kind of a big deal.
Yeah. If, if the candidate selected wishes to postpone the swearing in to the next meeting to have friends and family visit and that sort of thing and watch the ceremony, that's perfectly agreeable. We have a very short agenda tonight and we'll, we'll get along until the next meeting. Good idea.
Well, I thought if Sossen placed a choice would be tonight, swearing in would be Tuesday. Wasn't that?
I didn't, I didn't, I don't recall that. I did.
The petition went out to the candidate, didn't you, Sarah?
Did the application form say, Ray, that we weren't, that we would make the selection tonight and swearing in next time?
We have that as the regular process, but there is no required process. So if they choose to want to jump into the meeting tonight, the council and them can do it. There's no requirement that there's any waiting period under the ordinance.
We'll leave it up to the candidate that we select to.
But they could be sworn in tonight?
Yeah.
It could be.
We are prepared with a resolution and a swearing in form if we, if they and you all agree with it.
And we do have a judge.
And well, a notary at least, yeah, someone who can administer oath.
Yeah.
So it will be up to the candidate selected to be sworn in or not tonight. All right. Any other details? Chris Barney, please come on up. And welcome. We'll start with, I think you're first tonight, so we'll start with, we'll just go around with a series of questions.
Hi, Chris. Tell us about yourself and some of your previous community involvement.
Well, I'm a person that likes to be involved with my community, and I've done that in different ways. In my educational journey, I've been to a few different schools. I went to Springdale Job Corps. I went to Mount Hood College. And I held various leadership roles at those places. I was involved in the community a lot at Mount Hood, both by being part of some of the different clubs and by being in the student government during my last year of college.
John, why are you interested in serving on the city council at this time?
Well, I've been serving the city for a while on some of the committees, which has given me a taste of how things work. And because I had kind of considered the city my home, I thought it would be a good opportunity just to continue to serve, you know, my home.
What makes you qualified to be a city councillor?
I already have some experience with the city, having been on the CAC and the Budget Committee, and I've had some other leadership experiences.
What do you feel like your strengths are that you can bring to the council?
I'm very detail oriented. I like to make sure I understand a matter when considering it. And I guess I like to persevere. I don't like to give up on things. That's not to say I'm hard headed. I just like to be dedicated to something when I do it. And integrity is also a very important value to me.
What knowledge or experience do you have in the, in the operation of city government?
I think I've had a little bit of that from when I was in the student government at Mount Hood College, but I think my biggest experience comes from my time on the committees I serve on.
What do you see as the three most important issues facing the city of Troutdale in the next two years?
I think definitely police and fire are two of them. And I know parking is also one of the big ones right now.
If appointed, what would you like to accomplish as a councillor?
Well, the whole time I've been involved with the city, I've kind of considered this a learning process because I was very new to this when I first joined CAC because that was the first committee I served on. And so I guess what I want to accomplish is just to continue that learning process as I also work to, you know, serve my home and the people that live here.
Carol?
OK.
Go ahead.
City councillors sometimes have to make unpopular decisions. How would you handle those who criticize you or a decision you have made?
Well, I feel like honesty is the best policy, and it's important to keep a level head even in those situations. So I guess all I could really do is offer an explanation for why I went the way I did. You know, any decision I might be a part of, I would never be looking to harm anybody. I would always want the best possible solution.
Well, Jeffrey, there isn't another organized question, but you can just ask him to explain anything else he wants or however you want to handle it.
Chris, is there anything else, like outside of this, that we should know about you that would make you a good member of this council?
Well, I guess I would just reiterate my love for the city and the man that I rented a room from has also in the past been involved with the city, and I feel like I've gained a lot of wisdom from him as well.
All right. Well, very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you as well.
There are no wrong answers. You know, it's, we're glad to have you apply and we'll, we'll let you know.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Chris. Well, we're running a little ahead of schedule, but Zach Andrews? All right. Frank Stevens is here, so why don't we take, take you next?
Welcome. Thank you, Chair, and council members, and new council members.
And I guess I'll, I'll start since I'm next. Tell us about yourself and some of your previous community involvement.
How much time do you have, Chair? So I'm a 34-year Troutdale resident. We moved here in 91. I have four kids that all went to school here. As far as community service, I could start with just being a dad and starting out at Troutdale Elementary, dressing up in the Tiger, going to Walmorey to teach track and field across country, and then Reynolds High School where my son and my two sons and two daughters graduated. And then migrating at that full time as a four-year military veteran, working on aircraft. Those F-15s that you see flying around, they worked on those for 40 years. Along with that came a lot of federal and state responsibilities, to include recently the fire in the gorge, COVID. I worked at OHSU with the community during that, as well as a lot of other state and federal missions. So I spent a lot of time deployed. But in between, I tried to fit in as much as I could with my kids and my family here locally and tried to stay involved with not just Troutdale, but also Gresham and Fairview Village, Portland. And I loved the gorge. That's why I moved down here.
Great.
Why are you interested in serving on the city council at this time?
So I'm interested, it started out as just volunteering with the main streets of Halsey. I was asked if I could be on the Citizen Advisory Council for that. And it migrated into more of the, as I talk to people, and I'm retired now, so I have a chance to talk to more people in the community. And it's not about the why as much as the who. So as I'm talking to people, I just, that's what pushed me in this direction. So guys like Larry on Troutdale Road that have issue with the speeds, who can't back up, Paul that has issues with the speeds on Troutdale Road, the amount of traffic that's there, Connie who lives in Sandy Palisades with no bridge in between, Beaver Creek doesn't have a bridge yet, and all these things just kept adding up. And it kind of educated me, but at the same time, it gave me an opportunity to apply to some of the committees and get to know how the city is working these issues. And then that led to parking, and it honestly was a tsunami of information. It reminded me of my first sergeant days in the military, where you get hit with a ton of information and then just have to filter out. Does that help?
Yeah, thank you.
Cool. What makes you qualified to be a city councillor?
An extensive background with a number of different government agencies. I mean, during 9/11, I was working with the FBI and a number of departments, and then that filtered all the way down to state level as well. And then at the local level, actually working, like during the fire, working with Corbett Volunteers, and then all around the state. So the flood in 96, Katrina, most of the FEMA exercises, I was involved with those. I've been pretty much in on everything since 1983. So, yeah. So as far as experience for the city council, I'm also on the Planning Commission for Gresham. That was something else that just kind of fell into my, my list of things to do, which gave me a background in planning. I'm also a graduate from Portland State University focused on transportation and sociology. So I finished up my graduate degree just recently, which is weird, you retire and then you finish a degree. So, so I'd walk into a class and everyone thought I was the instructor, and I'm actually the student, which is kind of interesting. And my daughter graduated at the same time, so it's pretty cool. Yeah.
Could I interrupt just for a second? Can you hear me OK? Anybody?
Who that was?
Jesse. Yeah, this is Jesse. I'm sorry. I'm just having a hard time catching. If we could just move the microphone a little closer.
Can you hear me now?
That's perfect. Yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah, I have a soft voice too, so my bad.
What do you feel your strengths are that you can bring to the council?
Right now, I think the timing's really good because my transportation background is one of my main strengths. I'm heavily involved with EMUTC, the East Moultona County Transportation Committee. In fact, I just testified on the Stark Street Bridge status and the fact that the construction that's going on, as the lights aren't working correctly, the single lane isn't wide enough. There was a lot of issues there. No signage for speeds, and the speeds that they were posting were too high, not terribly safe for construction. And then I've done the same thing with Buxton, highlighted the fact that the crossings on Second are getting dangerous, talked to county, put in testimony there. And then I've worked with the staff on a number of other projects for the bollards down on 257, where that shared use path, there wasn't any safety net for, the bollards were gone, so cars were using the shared use path. So we worked on that this summer, got those replaced, put some boulders in, worked with Oki RD on that same project, and also Department of State lands.
Well, after that, it kind of seems silly to ask this question, but what knowledge or experience do you have in the operation of city government?
Specifically, Gresham planning. I mean, I've got a background in planning as well for education. And then I'm actually applying in Gresham. We just finished up the Pleasant Valley urban planning plan. Gresham's growing, surprisingly, so it's actually bordering Happy Valley right now. A lot of that has to do with transportation and how to connect. I think that's one of my main themes, is connecting the city. And I see that in Troutdale, Fairview Village as well, schools, parks. I think we definitely have the capability. It's there, and our green space and our park screw, we could make it happen. The connected ability here is really good, as well as the community. It's hard to know where to look.
What, what do you see as the three most important issues facing the city of Troutdale in the next two years?
Well, based on last night's meeting, I would definitely look at budget. So budget would be number one because it inter, connects with public safety, which covers fire and police. I, I think we should look at a strategic plan that goes beyond those two years. We already have a team in place, and I think you should extend that team, or at least look at extending that team. There's a lot of discussion about our police going into, coming back to us, and I think community would be receptive to that if we approached it from a bottom-up standpoint instead of a top-down standpoint. One of my thesis papers at PSU is how East County is othered, and basically Portland doesn't really give us any resources. There's a lot of othering that goes on, so we see a lot of our community basically being left out, and I think we need to change that narrative, and part of that is from the bottom up. We need to start getting involved in all these other committees as well. Good question. Jesse, can you hear me OK?
Well, for the, for Jesse, it's probably better if you speak closer to the mic and a bit louder.
OK.
I think that's, you're pretty.
I can hear him great now. Yeah.
All right.
I got his visual on him too, so.
All right. What do you see as the three most important issues facing the city of Troutdale?
I can go over three more. We can come up with more. That's fine.
If appointed, what would you like, what would you like to accomplish as a councillor?
You OK?
Got it.
OK. Yeah, so looking at the city councillor position is policy. I mean, the focus of the council is really focusing on that policy in the next two years, in the next five years, in the next 10 years, and then working with staff. And I think a firm strategic plan, I've never, I mean, I've been working with the committees for about nine months now, and I'm still really searching for a defined strategic plan that everyone's on the same page. I think that would be definitely something I'd like to see in my term, but at least something to work on. And it should be overreaching, so it wouldn't be just from the council standpoint down, but I think the CAC charter was a first step in that direction of getting community development and developing that, what is our, what do they see as our future in Troutdale in 20 years? Yeah, so that's kind of where I would go with what would I like to do in the next two years. I'm also heavily involved with transportation, so if you guys want to use my skills and knowledge to bug county, I'm here for you. In a good way.
Skip me and Jesse.
I know. Well, Jesse, there was this, we handed out some questions. Do you want to ask a question?
I don't feel the need to do that, since I don't have them here.
John?
City councillors sometimes have to make unpopular decisions. How will you handle those who criticize you or a decision you have made?
Agree to disagree. I mean, my military background, I've had that situation a number of times. You have to keep an open mind. The more I know, the less I know. Yeah, that's kind of my theme, and then never ask someone to do something you're not willing to do yourself. I mean, those are some of my mentoring trademarks and things that I like to pass on as well. So dealing with mitigation, I've, I've been in a union before, so I've dealt with negotiations, and sometimes that can get pretty, pretty hectic. It's not personal a lot of times, it's just a difference of opinion, and honestly, 40 years of service, that's what I fought for. I'm OK with people having a difference of opinion.
Quickly, I just have a couple of follow up. You mentioned being on in Muktuk. That's, that's, how could that be?
I'm not on a Muktuk.
Oh, OK.
I said I provided testimony.
OK.
Yeah.
That answers that. And the other thing was you're, you're on the, you list being on the Gresham Planning Commission. Are you still on the Gresham Planning Commission?
I am. So that would be one of the caveats of this position. If the two conflict, I'd have to drop that one. And that's fine. I only took the planning commission role for knowledge, really. And Gresham, I think my, the network that I've established is a benefit to us.
Just out of curiosity, our planning commissioners all live in Troutdale. How did, did you live in Gresham at the time? How did you get on the?
No. So their charter actually has different bylaws for the planning commission.
Sure. OK. All right.
I asked the same question because Carly Rice, who pulled me in, the urban planner over there, I was on a Safe Route to School event, handing out helmets to kids, and she actually said, hey, would you be interested in doing city planning? Because we were talking about urban studies.
Sure.
And I went, yeah, that's not possible out in Troutdale. And she goes, Gresham doesn't have that. So come to find out, there's a number of people from Troutdale that are actually on Gresham, have, have been on Gresham Planning Commission.
All right. Well, Hank, thank you. Is there anything else you want to say to us that we didn't ask?
No. Thank you so much. I did want to do a shout out for, during the election, I had 1,600 people, I'm an unknown. I mean, I just came off of retirement in July, and 1,600 people voted for me. That was amazing. Yeah, and I didn't put a ton of effort into it. So yeah, that, I must have touched a theme somewhere.
Yeah.
And then a shout out to the new commissioners or new council, councilors, directors, I'm trying to, the terms are different. Congratulations. And Jesse, you're online. Congratulations. And yeah, I'm here to serve. Let me know how I can help.
All right. Well, thanks. And because Frank was here, it's, we'll go back to Zach. It was, it was before six, so, you know, Zach Andrews, please come forward.
For the record, I was on time, right?
Oh, yes. I don't know where you were.
Good evening, councillors.
Excuse me. Mayor Rittman.
Yes. Paul.
The camera isn't centered on the applicants. Yeah, that's better, Zach. Thank you.
We had a cancellation, so we skipped ahead a little.
Copy that. No problem. It's good to see everybody. Thank you for the time. Appreciate it.
Well, thanks for applying, and we have a series of canned questions. So I think, Carol, why don't you take the first one?
So tell us about yourself and some of your previous community involvement.
Yeah, definitely. I've lived in Troutdale since 2020, the very end of the year. I got a house over by Sunrise Park, and since then have been kind of growing my involvement with the city. I initially, two community developers ago, got involved just by attending meetings, and they encouraged me to essentially apply to something. And I ended up getting all three things I applied for, to my surprise, so I'm kind of drinking from the fire hose, but I've been learning a lot. So to answer that question, I am on the Parks Advisory Committee, currently the chair. I'm also on the Town Center Advisory Board, also currently the chair, and I'm on the Planning Commission. So I've been involved for a few years now, and I, you know, feel very honored that I was, you know, encouraged by my peers to essentially apply to be a councillor as well. I originally wasn't going to run. I think we're doing good work on the committees, but there are a lot of good people on the committees, and I feel like the experience that I've gained from doing that and what I'm continuing to learn, in addition to what I can bring to the table at this point for the city and continue to serve in that way, I think would be highly beneficial, and, you know, I'd be honored for the opportunity.
All right. Jeffrey?
So why are you interested in serving on the city council at this time?
Yeah, at this time, I mean, there's a lot up in the air, I think on a, on a big scale, but as well as on a citywide scale. I think with some of the things in the works, whether it's the, you know, renegotiation of fire, police, or the confluence side development, opportunities abound, I think, with what we have going on. And my approach has always been to kind of take a holistic lens to that. It's, I care very deeply for the city. It's, I've not really been involved in any other city or community before Troutdale. But, you know, I have a three-year-old daughter at home, I have another kid on the way, like I'm raising a family here, and it's something that I want to make an impact on that will kind of outlive myself, so to speak. And I know with a lot of different opportunities, there are going to be chances to, I guess, kind of influence that and make the most beneficial choices for the community at large.
What makes you qualified to be a city councillor? I think you've answered it, but.
That's a great question. I mean, you know, realistically, I, I've gained a lot of experience through Planning Commission in particular. I've, I've learned a lot about city inner workings, everything from code compliance to on the Town Center Advisory Board, like, you know, working on the RFQ that goes out for development. You know, I've, I think I put it in my application, but like aside from experiencing a lot of what we do day to day. what we do day-to-day, I mean, a lot of you have already seen me in action, or I've served with you on these boards, so you kind of know how I operate, but I do take a holistic approach to kind of problem solving, but I also want to bring kind of a lens of increasing property value, making sure that we're being fiscally responsible. You know, I, going back to kind of your question, I feel that I, obviously we'll have a lot more to learn as we go along, but the current council is, are qualified enough that I feel like continue teaching me, I'm already learning a lot from watching and learning from the footage of previous council sessions. That's one of the good things, I think, about putting it online, is if I'm not present, because I'm, you know, putting my kid down to bed, I can sit down and watch like the URAs, last fiscal meeting and things like that, and kind of get up to speed, and I feel like, as a council person, I would have that responsibility to do my due diligence and kind of get, keep my finger on the pulse of what the committees are discussing in those moments. You know, a previous councillor, Sandy Glantz, who I greatly respect, I actually did an informational interview with her before I was originally thinking about applying for council, and, you know, really kind of got a good idea of the level of involvement that it entails. So I have no illusions about that, and it's something that I am committed to doing.
What do you feel your strengths are that you can bring to this council?
Well, between my career, which is very demanding at the moment especially, and the experience that I've gained through committees and being involved intimately with the city like I have up to this point, I feel like the innovative approach I've taken historically, just with kind of thinking outside the box, being able to work well with other committee members and those on the board to, you know, come up with solutions together and navigate things with respect, I think is key to making anything work. But I mean, I've, aside from the experience that I've lived with the city, I mean, when it comes to doing anything from real estate negotiation to general business operations and networking and everything else that I do on the side as well, I feel like I am here to serve ultimately, and with kind of a foundation of coming in here with those lenses that I kind of mentioned, like, I, putting that up to whatever problems we come across, I feel confident we can kind of work together and do that.
John?
I think number five, he's kind of already answered.
Skip to six.
What do you see as the three most important issues facing the city of Troutdale in the next two years?
Yeah, I mean, immediately what comes to mind, we have the renegotiation of our police and fire services, I think that's going to be a huge one. And we have the RFQ going out for the waterfront development, confluence site, that is going to be a massive, massive pull to the city, and we have kind of one chance to get it right. So that's a huge one, and, you know, another, and I mean, on those two alone, I mean, there's a lot riding on that, fiscally is a lot riding on that, I think culturally, citizens are expecting a lot, and it's, I mean, I'm expecting a lot, right? And it's, it's something to, I feel like, really to be involved with at this point is a good opportunity to influence change and in a positive way, and, you know, really make an impact, so, and other than that, I mean, there's a lot of other opportunities, but, you know, there's the Halsey Street Corridor project, there's the parking study, I mean, there's a lot of little things here and there that add up to a lot, but, yeah, aside from having experience with that, I think I'm enjoying getting into the details like I have has been a really big benefit, and I think it's something that would serve us well here.
If appointed, what would you like to accomplish as a councillor?
Yeah, I, you know, that's something I thought hard about, kind of coming into this, just obviously kind of wanting to have a general idea of what that could look like, and ultimately, and I kind of listed it out there, but I think any problem that arises or any solution to be found, because there's a lot of unforeseen things that happen, right, as we go along, I would just like to meet essentially with, and I, like, through the lens of increasing property value, maintaining an open mind to the needs of the community and the wants of the community, and also coming at things with an unbiased and generally well-informed approach. I think ultimately, those kind of three things will kind of guide whatever comes across, and, you know, I, yeah, so I guess just kind of applying that to making what we accomplish here really resonate.
You know, another beard, another beard up here wouldn't be so bad either. So city councillors sometimes have to make unpopular decisions. How do you feel like you would handle those who criticize you or your decision that you've made?
Yeah, that is a great question to ask, and I feel like I do that on a regular basis with my career. I mean, I, whether it's my team or a customer base, especially with some politics in the mix, I work with Tesla right now. So dealing with that, I think just comes down to communication. I think when it comes down to any decision that has to be made that may not be popular, you kind of have to navigate that change and just communicate. I think a lot of people want to know the why behind these things, and I think usually that helps put their mind at ease, or at least help them understand, you know, the reasoning behind things versus just kind of brushing them off or saying like, well, you know, like, it's kind of the way it is. I think it's important to take responsibility and like own up and, you know, back your decisions, and be able to speak to that from an informed standpoint, so I think that's kind of what it comes down to.
All right, well, hey, thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
Is there anything else you want to say or address us that we failed to ask?
Nope, I believe you guys were very thorough, so.
All right.
I appreciate the questions, thank you very much.
All right, well, thanks for applying, and thanks for all you do.
Yeah.
Well, we'll move on to, Twilight, you might not have expected to be next, but we did prank earlier, so you're up.
Dave, do you want to explain to the candidates that just came that they could either wait or?
Oh, yes, I did announce that at the beginning. You don't have to stay. We will discuss our choice after the meeting. It's a public meeting, you can stay or not, but we will inform the person selected and the others of the decision. We actually will reach consensus during the work session, and then during the council session, we will select someone, and if that person wishes to be sworn in and participate in this meeting, not required, you're welcome to do that. If you would rather have, you know, your three-year-old and your wife and whoever else you want at the swearing-in, we'll do it at the next meeting. All right? Twilight, you're up.
All right, thank you.
And we'll start with you.
Twilight.
Hello.
Tell us about yourself and some of your previous community involvement.
Yeah, well, I am a registered nurse by trade. I am not at the bedside any longer, I work in quality and safety and try to keep when people interface with our health system, so that people do not have stories or untoward outcomes. So that's how I spend most of my daytime hours, and in the evenings, I volunteer here, and I am the chair of the Citizens Advisory Committee. I'm also on PSCAC, and I am sitting on our committee that's working on the negotiations with fire and police. In addition, I also volunteer in the community at Camp Aaron once a year. It's a children's grief camp that helps kids that are going through grief who are ages six to 18. They go to a camp out in Boring, Oregon, and help put that on and ensure that there is a safe weekend for them and that they have good outcomes.
John? Okay, why are you interested in serving on the city council at this time?
Yeah, I think it's important to give back to the city that gives so much to you. I have lived here for almost 10 years now, I have two kiddos, one is in college, and I have one that's in the high school here, and, you know, I, participating in the committees and such has always been a value I thought was important as a community member. And then when I heard of the ability to, this opportunity, I thought, well, I'm going to go ahead and throw my hat in because I appreciate the work I do at committees, and I feel like this could be that next step that really helps me get more engaged with what's happening within the city in a more global way.
What makes you qualified to be a city councillor?
Yeah, I think first and foremost, I have a deep ethical background, I have studied and been on many ethics committees in the healthcare realm. I also, I really, one of my values is diversity and equity and inclusion, and I feel that that is a piece through the, a piece of the work we do on PSCAC, but also other committees that I have led and been part of in the workforce. So I think that kind of foundation is a great foundation for a councillor to have. The pieces, more pieces around how the city runs and all that, I think is still a learning, a work in progress for me, where I continue to learn, and I'm sure I would learn a lot being on council also. But I think, looking at my background and my history, I have many skills that I think you could apply to many different domains, and this being one of those also.
What do you feel like are your strengths that you can bring to this council?
Yes, I think my strengths are creativity, I'm a very creative person, I'm flexible, I'm also very optimistic. When there's a big problem or a big challenge, I don't give up, I'm pretty tenacious in the work that I do, you have to find a fix, you have to find an outcome, and you have to get people there with you. So I think those are some of the strengths that I would bring to the position.
What knowledge or experience do you have in the operation of the city government?
In the operation of the city government, I don't have much experience other than the councils that I sit on, but those have been very insightful, very learning. Mr. Ray Young helped us learn the Robert's Rules of Order.
Mr. Ray Young? Twilight, you're too kind.
And so some of those foundational pieces. Also, I have watched many of the city council meetings on the public access channel that you guys have, and so that is something that I am there in the background, taking it all in and watching and seeing how everything goes forward with those.
What do you see as the three most important issues facing the city of Troutdale in the next two years?
Yeah, well, I think first and foremost is safety and ensuring that we get a good contract moving forward with police, and then fire. I think those two pieces are foundational, because when people are in their community, they want to feel safe and know that when they need help, it's there and available for them. I also feel that the confluence is an exciting project. In addition, I think the third would be, we need to figure out how we can raise more general funds and such, because we are doing some huge projects, and I know we are struggling even with some of our parks to get some of our projects finished. So I would say those are the three things. We have some great pieces that are coming up and growing, but how do we keep all the wonderful things that we have out there and ensure that those are kept up to date and have safe green spaces and things like that?
If appointed, what would you like to accomplish as a councillor?
If appointed, that's a great question. I think first and foremost, I would want to be a great liaison to the community and be the voice of my neighbors and the people around me. I would love to see more community involvement in some sort. I know we're doing a great job reaching out to the community through our newsletter and our emails and our wonderful Facebook posts and things like that. So continuing to do that and figuring out in this day and age, how do we communicate with our community and get more feedback and involvement? I think that would be a key piece, so building some of those bridges with the different community members so that we have their voice and hear what they would like.
City councillors sometimes have to make unpopular decisions. How would you handle those who criticize you or on a decision you have made?
Yeah, you know, I have had to make many unpopular decisions in my role as a quality manager, and also around infection prevention, when I was an infection prevention manager. And I try to first and foremost give myself grace. I think all of us come to our volunteer positions or our roles and are trying to do the best that we can. I think having great communication with people and trying to figure out more about where that's coming from and what the concern is. I also think that people have the opportunity to grow, so sometimes, if figuring it out and having that communication, there may be areas for me to grow. But I also realize that as an adult, there is times also when you just have to let it go, because some people may just never have anything nice to say, so having the ability to also let it roll off your back if it's not something that we can change or do something about.
All right. Anything else you wish to tell us that we forgot to ask?
No, those are great questions, I appreciate you guys' time and talking with all of us.
Well, thank you. Twilight for applied. Bryce Baumgartner.
Thank you, everyone, for having me.
Welcome.
To get us started, although I wouldn't say that if Twilight was here, that would be three nurses on this council. And that, it's pretty close, right? So. Okay, I digress. Future though, that's.
Have another lady on here?
Can't have too many of those. Hi, Bryce, can you tell us a little bit about yourself and some of your previous community involvement?
Sure, where do I start? 1996, I applied to be a councillor for an outdoor school in my high school, and I was immediately addicted to being involved and volunteering for my local community and teaching sixth graders about the benefits of recycling and the outdoors, and just being outside, teaching outside is pretty fun. It's one thing I really like about Troutdale, we have a lot of amazing green space and we're the gateway to the gorge, that sort of thing. But that didn't stop there, I still do it, almost 26 years later. I go back and I volunteer a week of my time, I take vacation time off of work to go do this and volunteer for my hometown, and I teach sixth graders about the outdoors. And it's just, it's a, almost like a rejuvenating experience for me, and it's a way to get back to my hometown community that gave me so much, I lived there the whole time, and then I went, and then after a short stay in Corvallis, where I got my degrees in communication and speech communication and new media communication, I moved to Troutdale, and I got involved with a couple of theater boards, Corbett Children's Theater, I'm sure you've heard of, probably. I was involved on their board for a time, for one term, and then I was president of a local theater group called The Barnstormers Project, we only had three productions, one of them down in Glen Otto. And funny story about that is opening night on one of the plays was the same night my son was born. I was in the show, so that was a funny story I'll have to share sometime. But that was a very good and extreme experience. And then I've also been, with my job, I've been on the safety committee for 10 years. So those are, those are volunteer positions that I don't have to do, I just feel like I'm called to do.
Thank you.
All right, why are you interested in serving on the city council at this time?
That's a very, very good question. I got involved and I ran in last year's election because I wanted to get involved in the city or in some sort of, add value in some sort of way. I've been here since 2006, so I thought it'd probably be about time I try something. And I ran in the election and I was so thankful that I got so many votes that I did. Congratulations to all of those of you that got a lot more than me. That's totally fine. It's wonderful. But I, so that's the main thrust of why I got in is because I got contacted by our state representative, Zach Hudson, and asked if anybody wanted to try, try politics, like get into politics and get back. And so I had coffee with him one morning and he gave me a description of all you wonderful people and I got the rest of Citry. So I got, put my hat in the, had in the ring and I feel like I have a lot of value to add to this community and potentially this council.
What makes you qualified to be a city councillor?
What makes me qualified to be a city councillor? I'm a problem solver. I, I'm humble, I would say is another value that I uphold very dearly because humility is a big trait in politics. You can't think you're better than someone else, no matter your differences of opinion. You need to be present, you need to be a good listener, and you need to make the best choices and the best decisions based on the information you have available. And so there's a lot going on this time, right now, at this time. I also learned something recently that I find really fascinating about politics is a lot of the challenges that all you councillors are facing right now are not of your design. You inherited the voting and the decisions of previous councils and those problems are now your problems to solve. And a lot of times the community doesn't have that connection, doesn't make that connection. And so they blame you for all of the problems that are happening right now, but you were literally charged with picking up the pieces of decisions that were made potentially a decade ago or six years ago or that sort of thing. I don't know how you break that cycle of delayed results. But even the decisions you make right now as a council, those, the results of those decisions may not even be felt by the community long after you've left the council. So that's an interesting dynamic that I've learned in city politics or any politics in general, that we sometimes get caught up in the 24/7, you know, 24-hour news cycle about what happened yesterday somehow is exactly the reason why all of our problems exist today. And I just don't believe that in general. So I feel like you have to have vision, you have to have, you have to plan long term. Like one of my favorite lines, you probably remember from my application is, you know, you have to be, you have to live your life like someone who plants the seeds for trees that you know who shade you will never silt. It's just, it's just a beautiful analogy about the kind of my philosophy as I go.
What do you feel your strengths are in the current council?
Strengths? Definitely loyalty. I don't know if that's something that is, that you ever thought was a strength. I got hired in 2007 for the company I worked for, started at the bottom and now I'm prob, I'm, I'm running for the IT operations manager now. I've had every role on the team and now I'm pretty much at the, at the top of that echelon. And so by nature, I'm a problem solver. So my skills are primarily in information technology, IT, customer service, communication, taking a lot of complicated systems and complicated scenarios and then boiling them down to very simple terms so that I can report up the chain to people that are not as technical. And I see that a lot of those skills apply to almost any problem in any scenario. And I tend to use those skills all the time in my everyday life. So I think my problem solving skills, my communication skills, my generally good-natured, smiling face skills of being able to get along with almost everybody I meet. I don't know if you've ever heard of Strength Finder, too, but it was a book we had to do at work and you'd find out your top strength. I think Woo was my number one. I like it when other people like me and I, and I will strive for that. I want people to like me and no matter if we have differences of opinion, so.
What knowledge or experience do you have in the operation of city government?
Operation city government? I mean, going back to my humble trait is I may not have the most for sure in general, but I am a very quick learner. I have an insatiable curiosity. So I, I've been paying attention and ever since I joined the election and I learned a lot from Zach and he kind of an overview of how things are structured. I know that city council is the deciding body on how essentially funds are going to be spent or allocated. I know that Ray Young over here or his seat has to do a lot of the to-do stuff, you know, he gets the margin orders to do a lot of stuff. And then, of course, the committees make recommendations based on all sorts of data points to the council to help hopefully support them in making decisions. And cities have responsibility to their citizens. I mean, you have to provide clean drinking water, sewer, police, fire, hopefully other amenities. I know, I know that during the campaign and those of the citizens that I got to speak to, there's a huge demand for more public spaces that are indoors, like a community center type, you know, facility. I could see that being a big challenge, though, with the current budgetary, budgetary, you know, concerns that the city already has of building a new community center or adapting an existing building into something like that might not be something that's on the near radar with other budget shortfalls. But I definitely feel that that is what I would want to, want to work toward.
Thanks, Bryce. What do you see as the three most important issues facing the city of Troutdale in the next two years?
Next two years? Similar to what I already said, but not too dissimilar is I got to participate in last night's meeting. It was a very good discussion, very challenging discussion. And I definitely would never claim to be an expert about how to properly fund police and fire services, but I do not envy the challenge that is put forth in front of the council. And I do feel like I have, I had plenty of ideas that I couldn't articulate or share in the moment after only experiencing and getting up to speed for an hour and a half. But I do feel like those are going to be some challenges that you're going to have to work on budget related. Of course, the parks. I'm pretty passionate about parks and I adopted a piece of Kiku Park a few years ago or a couple of years ago. And I worked with the superintendent, who's now retired, to try to improve some trails along New York Beaver Creek. And I, I'm hoping that those kinds of, there will be room in the budget to continue those kind of initiatives as well.
I'll just jump to the last one. City councillors sometimes have to make unpopular decisions.
Yes.
How would you handle those who criticize or a decision you have made?
The best way that I feel like I could answer this question is just transparency. Like, I learned a long time ago and back in college from the shop guy. He was actually a shop foreman for the theater because I did, I was in like 10 plays at Oregon State. And I spent a lot of time in the shop helping build sets and stuff. He, he was a political debate writer. He'd write debates and debate strategies. One of the times he mentioned was, a political decision is always a decision where there's winners and losers. If there isn't winners and there isn't losers, it's not, there's no political decision there. It's just, yeah, let's do it. Everybody wins. Yay, let's go. There's always, there's always pros and cons to every decision that is made. And that's just, that's a matter of fact. And I believe it because I haven't seen an example where that's not true. So there will always be pros and cons to every decision that the council faces. And I think you have to take, you know, choose your battles and you have to take your, you have to take every decision in stride and hopefully you're making the best decision that is the best for the majority with the information that you had available to you at the time. Hindsight's 2020, you're going to be caught in a situation where there would be information that was withheld or information that we didn't know, we made a decision based on the data we had, and then it finds, comes out later that, you know, actually we were wrong because of X, Y, Z. That's, that's a hard position to be in, but at the same time, you know, you have to, you have to, you have to make decisions based on facts, not based on what you necessarily just believe. Does that make sense? I'm definitely a data-driven decision maker.
Okay. Well, thank you, Bryce.
Thank you.
For applying. Anything else you want to say or did we forget to ask?
No, I don't, I don't, I don't believe so, other than I appreciate you all very, very much for the, taking the time and all the citizens that voted for me in the last election. And I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, Martin Burles. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
I'll let you start.
Well, Martin, you probably have these questions memorized.
I think so.
Tell us about yourself and some of your previous community involvement.
So I went to Reynolds High School, I went to Mountain Community College over here. I graduated from Portland State. My wife and I have been doing business in Troutdale since 2007. We have a wedding venue at the end of the road over here. So I've been pretty much involved with the businesses. When we first got here, half the businesses were on the streets. So we're always talking to the businesses, see how they're doing, how we should do better. Just brainstorm ideas to, you know, to get through and then eventually everything continued to, you know, to be pretty good. But definitely, I got involved with working for UPS for 25 years. I was up in Seattle a few times, in Alaska, Oregon, came back here again. But up in King County, I was the United, or the United Way chairperson. So I was in charge of, you know, getting people together to donate money, obviously. But the most important part was building the relationships with the communities. We would go to remodel some homes, go to the parks and plant some trees, you know. We're always trying to figure, hey, is UPS going to do better than Boeing or than Starbucks or who's going to raise the most money, get the most wear? So that's kind of my community involvement right there and a little by myself.
Why are you interested in serving on the city council at this time?
So at this time, we've been just, just want to make sure that our businesses, our small businesses in town, they have the proper resources to succeed. And that's very important to this whole town, I think. And then, you know, the opportunity came up, I figured I'd give it a try. I have some, some ideas, some, you know, some experience, obviously through a corporation, not anything that has to do with government, but I just want to be involved with the decision-making process to make sure we do the right decisions for our community.
What makes you qualified to be a city councillor?
So I had like similar experience at UPS. I was, I had many positions in IT, operational excellence, business development, industrial engineering. I've done, you know, internal audits, master operating plans, disaster recovery plans. I've been involved with the whole workings of a corporation and it's been a large corporation, even though, you know, it's more centralized to the region and the district area. So I have a lot of experience in that, nothing as a council member, even though I was on safety committees and, you know, just the normal United Way committees and just a lot of experience that I've had that I obviously won't talk about, but, you know, I feel like I can bring a lot of ideas and brainstorm with you guys.
What do you feel like your strengths are that would bring, you could bring to the council?
Definitely, you know, integrity. You gotta obviously be the same person every day and, you know, make the right decisions and do them over again, the same decisions are right. Communication skills, I build relationships, I've talked to a lot of people, put together meetings. I just like team building, you know, it's definitely involvement. Those are my, my strengths, just to definitely, I used to have 48 technicians, so I was able to, you know, build them up, lead them, give them reviews, make them improve, you know. By the time they come to me with a question, they already know what the answer was, but they're just approving it through me. So it was, it's nice to, you know, to work with a lot of people that were willing to help the corporation.
What knowledge or experience do you have in the operation of city government?
So not in city government, but obviously UPS, the corporation, kind of follows the same structure anyway. It got corporate region, districts and the normal areas, but just a lot of involvement with the workings of, for example, being an IT manager, I've been through, IT goes through every, every part of every corporation. So you deal with, you know, the planes fly, the, you know, HR have the proper, you know, technology in place to hire employees, you know, just every branch, you know, technology got involved. So again, no governmental experience, just a lot of corporation experience.
What do you see as the three most important issues facing the city of Troutdale in the next two years?
So definitely budgeting. I was involved a lot of budgeting with all my technical employees and everywhere that I'm at, but that's the first, first one. The second one, obviously, it's what the community needs is safety, fire, you know. I know that there's a sheriff contract coming up. I really enjoyed what you guys did during COVID and all the stuff that's happened in Portland like four years ago. You guys did pretty good communicating with the sheriffs and, you know, Ray Young got involved with all those items that are about to affect us over here. So it really helped the businesses. So that's, again, I want to be part of the decision-making process to have the businesses succeed in this town and to have the community be vibrant and strive. Oh, and also the third one would be just always thinking of parks and recreation. There's that new project by our venue over there. I can't wait to get it, you know, to get it done. Definitely to add some historical points of view to the parks department, that'd be nice. I really enjoy the history of this town and I know we can learn a lot from it, but you know, I'm just probably looking back at what's been happening here since the town was put together. So first, I mean, I got a lot of learning to do, like to talk to you guys, go talk to the business members or the business and the communities, you know, just a lot of learning. I like to get myself immersed into things and just start looking at the details. Definitely get involved, yeah.
All right.
City councillors sometimes have to make unpopular decisions. How would you handle those who criticize you or a decision you have to make?
I've been involved a lot with corporate audits where you come into an operation and they think they're all doing good and, you know, you know they're going to find a lot of issues. So it's, it's definitely, you have to have a lot of positive confrontation with certain people, but you know, obviously before you show them the findings, you gotta let them know, hey, these are, these are the facts, this is what we found, these are your methods, your process that failed. But the idea is to improve them. So it's, you know, we're, we're just trying to do not to beat up the people, but obviously to let them know what they can do to improve. So if you have an open, honest, transparent attitude to it and you can definitely tell them, this is what was happening, this is what we need to do to improve, by the next audit, you know, we found that people are actually giving you the answers before, you know, it was a much nicer conversation. So, yeah, definitely a lot of involving with people and very transparent when it comes to our decision like that.
Well, thank you for applying. Do you have anything else you want to say or anything we forgot to ask?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you and you have my commitment that if I do get elected for this position, I'll definitely get involved with all of you guys, try to make informed decisions based on the facts that are presented out there. that are presented out there, just work with the community and I'm willing to do this and my wife supports it too.
All right, well, thank you Martin, I really appreciate it.
Do we go outside or what do we do?
You're welcome to stay or go, we're going to discuss, we don't have much time. And in fact, it may be necessary to start the council meeting a few minutes late, depending on how this goes. You're welcome to stay or you can wait outside, it's up to you. Or go home, you know, and we'll let you know. The, I just have to say this isn't going to be easy, every single applicant would make a good councillor in my opinion. But we, we've got before us a decision to make and I don't quite know how to, there's no set process. We can't take a secret ballot, so we're, I mean, you, you vote first, let's just go around, Jesse, you'll follow Glenn and I guess let's see if we have a consensus. I don't see, say anything you want.
Mr. Mayor, you said you vote now, I think it wouldn't be a vote, it's just, do you have a preference?
True, we are, we are only reaching consensus at this point, so I don't, I'll annote you first anyway.
Seems like I'm always number one on these tough decisions and this is definitely one of those. You know, I really appreciate my own applying. You know, as always, I'm always impressed with the talent we have here in Troutdale. But we do have to narrow it down, so this is like question number eight. Sometimes we have to make unpopular decisions, so. I really like what Martin said, I like the idea of having a private sector business guy. And I also know we've weakened our committees quite a bit of pulling some people out, but I think in fairness to the people that have been doing the work on committees, that I kind of give them a lot of credit for already having served. So with that, I'm going to go with, my, my first pick would be Zach Andrews.
All right, Jesse, you want to say a few words?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great, yeah, sorry I was driving for those last couple, but I was able to tune in on Zoom there. I couldn't see him, but some great answers. Everybody, everybody there that interviewed today would be a great piece to the council, I couldn't find fault in anybody. It's really tough, like Glenn said, so many qualified people, so many committed members of the community, volunteers, members of chairs or chairs of committees. I would have to, I really liked Zach, I also liked Frank as well, those would be one and two for me.
John?
So, yeah, we get, I have to hear the kind of score. My first pick, what is that?
Okay, Carol, you want to weigh in?
Well, there's a lot, everybody that came tonight was great and it's hard to pick because everybody has their unique experience that they could bring to the board and help us along. I would have to say my first pick would be Zach.
Jeffrey?
I feel like this ends up being a lot of pressure on us, especially when people are in the room and whatnot, but. I, golly, I just kind of like put different things to different people mean different things. And what I feel like the biggest qualities that we need is someone that is going to speak up, speak their mind and be, be involved. And, you know, something I am still seeking, trying to find is, you know, how else can I get involved in the city? What can I do to help grow my position as a councillor? I feel like Frank Stevens kind of exemplifies those things as my like first, my first choice, so.
All right, I, and I had encouraged a couple of these applicants to apply. So with, with no promise I was going to vote for them, I can only vote for one anyway. And I agree with the comments that any of the applicants would make a good councillor and it's tough, but I think I will, I will name Zach as my first choice also. So that establishes a consensus of five of the six of us picking Zach and we will vote during the council meeting. If that's agreeable, anybody else want to say anything?
I just want to say it was hard.
Yeah, this is hard.
It was really hard for me because I've grown to know three of you very well and the other ones, I mean, I've met, but I'm growing to know you all and it was such a hard decision for me to make and it just, you know, it was a hard decision.
All right, well, look, we, we'll start the council meeting in about a minute, I need to take a break, so let's do that.
Can I say something?
Jesse, yes, please.
Sorry, again, driving, but on my way down there, but would it be beneficial? I mean, there was a couple of frontrunners with Zach and Frank. Would it be, are we voting for just those two or are we voting officially in the council meeting? Or is it just a vote?
We will vote at the council meeting, it's agenda item number three, I think. And there's a resolution to select a councillor, we will vote for one, not first and second. Apparently what makes this tough. Anyway, allow me to take a break.
Do we have to adjourn, do we have to adjourn?
Oh, is there a second?
I second it.
This work session is, oh, any, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Somebody opposed?
You don't have to say they, I think, they'll figure it out.
Anyway, we'll start the council meeting in a minute. And thank you all.